Good evening, welcome to the Southbridge Town Council meeting on Monday, January 13th, 2020. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
(Inaudible) United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, and天地, just as law.
Roll call, Madam Secretary.
Counselor Adams.
Present.
Counselor Katrona.
Present.
Counselor Daniel.
Present.
Counselor Jovan.
Present.
Counselor Lazo.
Present.
Counselor Manna.
Present.
Counselor Marquetti.
Present.
Counselor Nash.
Present.
Counselor Steve.
Present. All members present. Item three, considering except the town council minutes of Monday, December 16th, 2019. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Errors, corrections, or missions? Counselor Steve.
Just one minor thing, under item 10, my name is Ms. Bell.
Okay, any others? Counselor Marquetti.
I don't have any questions, corrections, but I did have a question. There was something about attorney, the attorney, the town attorney, whether there was a conflict of interest in his appointment. I was just wondering if that was ever looked into.
Okay, you can take that up at Counsel's forum.
Yep.
Not just, this would be the acceptance, and if you could just write a note and recall that.
Yep. Or you can just let me know later, I don't have to remember.
What's that, Counselor?
You can just let me know later.
Okay, thank you. Any errors, corrections, others? All those in favor? Opposed?
Stand.
Counsel Lazo abstains. Motion carries. Subcommittee reports, General Government, Counselor Steve.
Haven't had a meeting recently, don't have one scheduled.
Department of Public Works, Counselor Nash.
Thank you, Chairman. Department of Public Works met on, or Subcommittee met on January 6th, last Monday night. The results of that meeting included favorable recommendations to the Council on items on tonight's Agenda 13 through 18. No meetings scheduled currently, thank you.
Thank you. Excuse me, members in the audience, if you wish to have a conversation, could you step out because it's very distracting to us up here? I don't mind you talking, but it's distracting to us up here, thank you. Education and Human Services, Counsel Lazo.
Yes, we had a meeting. We're going to be talking about recommendations on Agenda Items 9, 11, and 12. Next meeting date is January 21st, 20.
Thank you. Plan Development, Counselor Adams.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. We have not had a meeting, it's our last town council, but I do have one scheduled for this Thursday at 6:00 PM in the Veterans Room. Also update for the Curbside, we have a meeting on February 4th at 3:00 PM in the Veterans Room, where we'll be discussing our presentation to the town council. That's all I have, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Protection of Persons and Property, Counselor Manna.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. There was a meeting last Thursday, thank you, Mr. Chair, for chairing that for me, as I was delayed in traffic. I believe that is Agenda Item number nine.
Yes.
And there's no meetings at this current time.
Thank you. Chairman's announcement, just, we received two memos in the last couple of weeks regarding resignations, one, we have resignation to the Southbridge Housing Authority, Ms. NATO, who resigned due to conflict with work. I've contacted, I'm trying to contact the Chair of that Committee, Ashley Wolf, to see if by Charter, we're supposed to fill that within 60 days, or unless an election occurred, and given the fact that there is a, it's within that timeframe, we'll have to see if there's members that want to be appointed to that. Also received the resignation from Michael Montigny of the Southbridge School Committee, effective immediately on January 7th, as he moved out of Southbridge. Again, that fell within the timeframe. He was appointed to fill a position that would go till the election. I've notified the receiver, the copy had gone to the receiver, I've asked them to reach out to the Chair of the School Committee to see what their intentions are in filling that position, and we'll bring that forward as soon as we have further information. Both positions would require a joint meeting between the Council and that appointed body, or that body, per the Charter, so we'll get back to you. Those positions would be posted on the town's website going forward. Had communication with the town manager relative to the upcoming budget season, we've agreed I will be setting up a special town council meeting, so that the Council can meet with the town manager, lay out the parameters and what our expectations are as far as the budget
Proud of these girls and their coaches. Never in the 13 years that I had been involved with chair for Southbridge Pop Warner, had
for next year, what percentage of increase we might anticipate, what some of our priorities
I seen such dedication and respect for a coach and determination to win, all while having
that we think as a council should be, so that when he formulates the budget, he knows where we're coming from, so that while we can have a cohesive message.
fun, not while being tedious, not tedious work, but they had fun doing it.
Look to schedule that sometime late next week, given the fact that some councils are out of town. That's all I have tonight.
They are your central mass champions.
Mr. Town Manager?
I have no announcements this evening.
Southbridge Pop Warner has presented many central mass champions, but very few have
Thank you. Presentations, we have one presentation this evening.
had the chance to move on to regionals and actually placed to move on to nationals.
Earlier this year, we had the Pee Wee Cheerleaders that came to before the Council stating
They actually had the opportunity, when they say, when they announced the winners, they
that they were going to the national championships down in Florida, and the coaches came before
say, and moving on to nationals in Disney, in Orlando, Florida, is, and years, we've
us and gave us a presentation, and we invited them back upon completion of that tournament
just been at that competition, waiting to hear our name, and we didn't hear it.
to let us know and the town know how they made out.
This year, we heard it.
So they did place fourth place as national champions, which is a tremendous accomplishment.
So they are your central mass champions, your regional runner-ups, and your finalists for national Pop Warner, they came in fourth place.
I've invited the coaches to come up, as well as the cheerleaders, we have a presentation,
All of this would not have been possible without some very heavy dedication from our
and I believe the cheerleaders will do a chair to the town as well.
(Inaudible)
parents, the girls themselves, while fundraising, our board, and even a very special football player, who was just so excited about this, he stepped up and he was right there, doing all the fundraising with the girls, but especially to the organizations of Southbridge, the businesses of Southbridge, and the citizens of Southbridge. They came forth and donated a lot of money, and we will never, ever forget it, and we will always be very grateful, because without that, they would not have been able to go. And also, I'll just add this on a side note, it wasn't just these girls that were central mass champions, also your Southbridge Mighty Mike girls were also central mass champions. Much of that, people did not know, this was the first year that Mighty Mites were able to compete on a level. Usually, they are just exhibition, this year they competed, and the girls seven to nine years old are also your central mass champions, so that's also something to be very proud of. Pop Warner as a whole is something to be very proud of. For 50 years, they have dedicated their time and energy to help form youth of this town, and most recently, extended out of this town. We have people from Charlton, we have people from Sturbridge now, because they believe in the Pop Warner philosophy over some other philosophies that are out there. So for 50 years, it's been an amazing feat for them to be involved with this town and these youth. So with that being said, I will announce the girls, and they will actually take the, I'll hold on to these girls, they will actually take their space on the floor, okay? All right, yeah.
So presented tonight, certificate of congratulations, congratulations to the Southbridge National Pee Wee Cheerleaders, who took fourth place in the national championships on December 8th, 2019. Like to thank the coaches, Donna Gendron, Janay Luakas, Danielle Thomas, Team Mom, Daliana, I'm going to mess up those names, so that's why I'm going to have, there you go, and Chair Coordinator Wendy McFarland.
thank you very much for this opportunity for the girls, it was wonderful, by you allowing
Through teamwork and dedication, challenge brings success. On behalf of the town council and citizens of Southbridge, we congratulate you.
everybody to come here and do theirs, to speak on their behalf, it just, the outpour
Signed, John Jovan, Council Chairman. So congratulations, and I'll let you pass those out to the girls.
was incredible, you should all be proud of yourself and of your town. The girls would like to do a snippet of their chair for you, obviously, because of Thank you.
Thank you. Any comments at all? Counselor Nash?
safety reasons, they can't do everything, and space reasons, but they can do a little
Thank you, I'd be happy to say something. What a great testament and representation of the spirit of this community.
something for all of you and for the town.
Thanks so much to the young ladies, the coaches, and the families, as well as the community
So first will be Aliana Albaladejo, Tatiana Albaladejo, Hannah Gendron, Sabrina Mateo,
that helped us sponsor. Well done, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, girls, and well done, and congratulations, and thanks for coming back and letting us know how you made out, and the fine representation that you did to the town, congratulations,
Katuska Rojas Morales, Alicia Plymouth, and Haley Thomas.
thank you. Item eight, Citizens Forum.
Watch the chords, girls.
Is anyone from the audience that wishes to address the Council on any item that is
(Inaudible)
not on the agenda this evening? Second call, seeing none? Item nine, vote to confirm the appointment of Kevin Loughlin as Code Enforcement Local Building Inspector S11, effective immediately. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Town Manager?
I'm going to defer tonight, if it's okay with you, Mr. Chairman, to our Director of Inspection Services, who is prepared to make a few remarks on this particular candidate.
Thank you. Mr. Palatier?
I prepared very diligently, this is Kevin, he's a great guy. If I may, we did a, we had a really great guy in Bill before, he initiated a program through the CDBG to start investigating some of the, proactively looking at some of the multifamilies in town. It's mandated by the building code, but had never been done, because we didn't have the resources to do it. Using CDBG monies, we found the resources to do it. Bill started a great program. Bill left us for Better Fields, and we did a search for a replacement for Bill. The replacement that we are proposing is Kevin. Kevin comes to us with, I believe, 34 years of building experience, starting before they even had a supervisor requirement on construction supervisors, vast array of knowledge from soils to construction systems to construction materials, worked many years alongside our current building inspector, Mike. Looked at everybody who applied for the job, interviewed a couple, very happy with what we saw in Kevin. I believe Kevin has the right attitude, has the right knowledge to fill this position, and to bring the program that Bill started all the way through to completion.
Any further discussion? Counselor Lazo?
It's, it's, welcome aboard, Kevin. The Subcommittee voted unanimously, recommendation moved forward to the Council. The last two appointments, when it comes to buildings, they are very, very experienced on structural and various things, I think it's a great pickup.
Okay, thank you. Andy, just as, Counselor Manna had pointed this out, on the paperwork that came to us on the application, it was unsigned, do you have a signed application on file?
(Inaudible).
Yeah, says the applicant certification and agreement, I'm sure he probably signed it, but our copy doesn't have a signed copy.
I do not, my signature?
No.
I don't, okay. I assume Kim has it, that's, that's human resources stuff?
Yep.
So I can't vouch for that, but if we don't, we will before he starts.
Okay, all right, appreciate it, yep. I missed it the other night when we had it, but, okay.
Kim was very efficient through this whole thing, and I cannot possibly imagine she missed it.
Yep, so, okay. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous, all present.
Congratulations.
Congratulations, Kevin, welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item 10, vote to appoint Fire Chief Paul Norman as the Emergency Management Director for the town of Southbridge, effective immediately, for an indefinite period. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. So I had brought this up to, I had asked Chief Norman, typically the fire chief is appointed as the Emergency Management Director, by nature of his position, he serves as the Emergency Management Director. When I asked the Town Hall whether in fact, we as a council, when we appointed him a fire chief, did we also subsequently appoint him as the Emergency Management Director? Just to make sure that we have that on file with the state, they could not find any, anything that we had done that, so I asked them to make sure we put this on the agenda just as a formality, so that when, they are working on the Emergency Management Plan now, so when we submit that paperwork to the state, we've done everything that we could, and we've actually appointed him to that position. So, anybody have any questions? I didn't put it through PPP, because it's a normal course of business, it's just a formality. Okay? Any other discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Are you in favor, Counselor?
Yes.
Okay, you went up late, so I just want to make sure. All, motion carries. Item 11, vote to accept a grant agreement between the Executive Director of Massachusetts Office of Disability and the Town of Southbridge, in the amount of $11,515, contingent upon the MOD's receipt of detailed itemized invoices showing incurred expenses between the date of the contract execution in June 20th, 2020. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Mr. Manager?
Just one brief comment here, obviously this is a positive grant for the town, I just want to commend Ryan Rodiger, a police officer who got very involved with this. Cares very much on the issue, about this issue, he's on the Disability Commission, he went way out of his way to apply for this grant, and this will make it easier access through a number of doors, including the Town Hall doors. As some of you may recall, we had a resident that was concerned, they could not push the button, this will allow him to enter that entranceway without having to push a button. It's essentially a phone app that they can use, so I think it's a really good thing, and I really want to commend him for the work he did on this grant.
Counsel Steve?
Yeah, through you to the manager, so if this is going to be available as a phone app, how, how does the citizenry get access to it? Who actually can use it?
So it's my understanding that this is a phone application, so I imagine, I didn't get specifically with the officer on this, but I imagine you download that application, and it connects to some device at the door that opens the door. A number of doors are going to have to be replaced for this to be able to work, but that's all through the grant process, and Ryan's been working directly on it, so the technical how would probably be better asked of him than me, but that's the process.
Okay, when we figure it out, could we make sure we put it on the website, so people know?
Okay, we will, once it's in place, yeah.
And just one quick correction, should be, motion should be June 30th, because that's what the paperwork says, so it was a typo, thank you, Counselor Daniel, for bringing that. So with unanimous consent, if we could just make that to June 30th?
Yep.
Is that okay with everybody? Counselor Manna?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you to the town manager, if you noticed this question. So is the app, is that going to be accessible for iPhone, your Droid phones, regular, other cellphones, maybe that perhaps somebody maybe can't afford an iPhone or a Droid or something? How, how is that going to be available to them?
But again, we didn't give the specifics as to the technical aspects of how it works with a cellphone. I can check with them that and send it to the Council, once I get a little bit more detail. The key is, and this is obviously a special need for people who need it, for most people, the door is already handicap accessible by button, you just push the button in, but this is for the type of disability where you have no access with your hands to use it, so it's very limited as to how many people will actually use it, but we will make people aware of how that is, and once we have the program and Ryan gets the information, we'll put it, like Counselor Steve's recommended, on the website, and make sure the Disability Commission knows exactly how it works, so they can spread the word among that group of people as well.
Thank you.
Counsel Lazo?
Mr. Chairman, the phone app at Subcommittee was an example of how the money would be used in upgrading some of the handicap doors that are handicap access, we're learning more and more about it. We had one of our own, Southbridge's finest, worked diligently on this grant, did a great job. The Subcommittee voted unanimous to support this, to move it forward to Council, thank you.
Thank you, Counsel. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous, all present. Item 12, vote to approve the transfer of $31,814 from account number 001.945.565000, Southern West County Regional School District Bay Path Assessment, to account number 01132.578100, Town Council Reserve. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
EHS Subcommittee Chair?
The recommendation was unanimous to push forward with this, and commended Bay Path on their due diligence to finance, thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Manna?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you, town manager. Looking at this letter, it shows December 1st, 2018 is past due, so has that been paid yet? And if not, why is it past due?
So in terms of the delayed date, the Chairman of the Town Council had asked me about that as well, he had spoke to our Finance Director, and I've spoke to her, it was a one-time kind of mistake in terms of the process, he's corrected it and feels that it will no longer happen again.
But you didn't answer my question, is it paid?
It is paid, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous, all present. Item 13, vote to approve the transfer of funds totaling $3,680 from Sewer Capital Reserve Account Number 600440-583000-89500, to Sewer Other Legal Account Number 600440-576100, to cover legal charges from Merrick O'Connell, related to the preparation and negotiation of the contract with Viola for the operation of our wastewater system. Is there a motion? Discussion? Counselor Steve?
My only question as far as this goes is, so how much have we spent so far on Merrick O'Connell this year?
Did you get that, Counsel Marquetti?
No, I couldn't, I barely hear you, so I wanted to make sure.
I asked, how much have we spent on Merrick O'Connell so far this year?
Okay, through you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, so for this specific issue, which is the negotiation of the 20-year contract between us and the firm, it cost us $5,280 for the first part, which is the whole development of the actual contract, and going through that part, additional $5,680, which was part of, I guess you'd call it part of negotiation, really centered around the issue of liability, for a total of $10,960.
What I was referring to is the broader spectrum of how much we've spent on the lawyer so far this year, not just this issue.
So, through you, Mr. Chairman, I don't know, I mean, I know that Cheryl's been sending you out the quarterly reports of all legal fees?
Nope, haven't seen it.
We haven't gotten a quarterly report at all this year. Okay, I will, I will, where are we now, January? So you should have got one, we should be getting the one for October, November, December, you haven't gotten it?
Nope.
I'll check with her tomorrow, and we'll get that out to you right away.
I don't believe, did we get the first quarter?
I don't remember seeing any legal fee set all this year. I will check, she does quarterly reports on that, so I'm unsure why you didn't get them, I'll make sure that you have the last couple ones, they're done on a quarterly basis, you've been providing it to me, I'm not sure why you haven't gotten the last one or two, I'll make sure you got it.
Okay. Counselor Katrona?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you to the town manager, you're saying this contract cost $10,000, is that what you stated, to negotiate this contract? I agree with the premise of having the attorney review the contract, but how much, they spent 16 hours, what we see tonight, almost $4,000, and I have no problem with the attorney reviewing a contract, but why couldn't we handle this in-house?
Mr. Tommair?
Through you, Mr. Chairman. So, thank you, it's a very good question. This contract is more unique than most of the other contracts you did. As Counselors be aware, we actually put out requests for services for an engineering company to help us come in and develop, not only requests for proposals, but also the contract within it, so it was a combination work of the engineering company and our law firm, who had to develop a contract, a 20-year contract, and we had to look at all the components of what would have to be in that contract. This is not a standard kind of, here, we give you our contract, this was something that we developed ourselves, and we put it in with the request for proposals, so it's sort of a model contract that was developed by us. That was the $5,000, I think, $280, I said, to develop, actually write the contract, develop it, propose it, and then the other $5,000-something dollars was the actual negotiation component.
Again, as I stated before, I agree with the lawyer, the attorneys reviewing the contract, once it was presented to them, I'll leave it at that. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Counselor Manna?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you to the town manager, and I just want to know, they, we've dealt with Viola in the past, being our, why didn't we just go off an old contract and revamp it? And it, I mean, because it just seems like now we did double duty, we paid double the pay, kind of like what's happened in the past on other things too, so I'm just curious as to why we didn't use that as a template.
Tommair?
Through you, Mr. Chairman, so it's a very good question. You've got to remember that this contract hasn't been negotiated with the town for 20 years, so the legal language and the terms of that contract would have been for a sewer treatment 20 years ago today. The same thing is true, that's why we had to go out with a new RFP for the operation of the plant as it exists today, what the maintenance would be, what the capital needs would be, all of the functions of the existing plant, also with all the legalese of existing, the existing world today. We didn't, as I said before, and I want to make it really clear, this was not an off-the-shelf contract, this was a contract that we developed, our attorney worked with our engineering company to develop a model contract, that now is obviously 20 years newer than the one that we would have used. This is extremely important to the town, because this contract could expose, potentially, if it was done incorrectly, could expose the town to millions of dollars of liability. So yes, we invested a little bit of money in legal fees on this issue, but the return in terms of the protection for the town for what could be millions of dollars of liability is well worth it. So I think it was a reasonable investment to protect the citizens of Southbridge, and it was something I think we had no choice but to do.
So, if I may follow up, why did it take 20 years? I mean, do we have a 20-year contract before that was set in place? So there was a 20-year contract before that was set in place, and, and it was signed, and, you know, everybody was good with that, and...
So through you, Mr. Chairman, that is correct. 20 years ago, they negotiated the contract with Viola at that point. After 20 years, it was actually a five-year kind of renewal thing, I think it was 10-year with two five renewals. So that contract was renewed to a full 20-year, which is its initial contract. So the contract had to be completely redundant, and one that was voted on by Town Council recently is a new 20-year contract, so we don't have to deal with this issue again for the next 20 years.
Okay, so if I just, I'm just a little confused. So you said the last 20-year contract, it was 10 years, and a five-year review, and a five-year review?
I think that's what it was, yeah.
Okay, so it's not that it hasn't been reviewed in 20 years, because we had to have reviewed it five years ago, right? To be, from, this is what I'm understanding from you?
Yep.
So, I mean, and if there was something that would have came up five years ago, so I don't believe that we, and I'm not saying that this shouldn't have been done, but I'm not, I don't believe that we would have been in liability for millions of dollars, because it was just looked at five years ago.
So through you, Mr. Chairman, so to be clear, the whole contract wasn't negotiated, and again, I'm not sure if it was 10 and two fives, I'll have to look at the makeup of that, but the contract wasn't renewed, it's really just an extension of the term, was really what happened for the full 20 years. So the contract had sort of renewals or extensions for the terms, be it five years or three years or whatever it might have been. So the contract has not been negotiated in a real sense for 20 years. The new contract is completely different, and it was sort of interesting, and this was a big issue into the negotiations, back 20 years ago, they did not ask the town to protect them against liability, 20 years ago. And this time, they were trying to, they put in a very big if issue, effort at trying to get the town to be responsible for potential liability. So the legal language and the terms of that contract would have been for a sewer treatment 20 years ago today. The same thing is true, that's why we had to go out with a new RFP for the operation of the plant as it exists today, what the maintenance would be, what the capital needs would be, all of the functions of the existing plant, also with all the legalese of existing, the existing world today. We didn't, as I said before, and I want to make it really clear, this was not an off-the-shelf contract. This was a contract that we developed, our attorney worked with our engineering company to develop a model contract that now is obviously 20 years newer than the one that we would have used. This is extremely important to the town because this contract could expose, potentially, if it was done incorrectly, could expose the town to millions of dollars of liability. So yes, we invested a little bit of money in legal fees on this issue, but the return in terms of the protection for the town for what could be millions of dollars of liability is well worth it. So I think it was a reasonable investment to protect the citizens of Southbridge, and it was something I think we had no choice but to do.
So if I may follow up, why did it take 20 years? I mean, do we have a 20-year contract before that was set in place? So there was a 20-year contract before that was set in place, and it was signed, and, you know, everybody was good with that, and...
So through you, Mr. Chairman, that is correct. 20 years ago, they negotiated the contract with Veolia at that point. After 20 years, it was actually a five-year kind of renewal thing, I think it was 10-year with two five renewals. So that contract was renewed to a full 20-year, which is its initial contract. So the contract had to be completely redundant. One that was voted on by Town Council recently is a new 20-year contract, so we don't have to deal with this issue again for the next 20 years.
Okay, so if I just, I'm just a little confused. So you said the last 20-year contract, it was 10 years and a five-year review and a five-year review?
I think that's what it was, yeah.
Okay, so it's not that it hasn't been reviewed in 20 years because we had to have reviewed it five years ago, right? To be, from, this is what I'm understanding from you?
Yeah.
So, I mean, and if there was something that would have came up five years ago, so I don't believe that we, and I'm not saying that this shouldn't have been done, but I'm not, I don't believe that we would have been in liability for millions of dollars because it was just looked at five years ago.
So through you, Mr. Chairman, so to be clear, the whole contract wasn't negotiated, like, and again, I'm not sure if it was 10 and two fives, I'll have to look at the makeup of that, but the contract wasn't renewed, it was really just an extension of the term was really what happened for the full 20 years. So the contract had sort of renewals or extensions for the terms, be it five years or three years or whatever it might have been. So the contract has not been negotiated in a real sense for 20 years. The new contract is completely different, and it was sort of interesting, and this was a big issue into the negotiations, back 20 years ago, they did not ask the town to protect them against liability 20 years ago. And this time, they were trying to, they put in a very big if issue, effort at trying to get the town to be responsible for potential liability. It was something we fought extremely hard against and frankly, at the end, won. But that liability question where they wanted to absolve themselves of partial liability, which is frankly, has been allowed to happen in other towns, the town of Southbridge wouldn't go down that path, and we fought against that, and effectively, we won.
Okay, so I guess my only concern was, you said that it was 10, five, and five, and now you're saying, well, it might have been, I'm not really sure. So before you say it was 10, five, and five, and then just make sure. I mean, you're in charge of the contracts, so, and that's all. I'm just, it's a little confusing, and to have just contracts for 20 years and then you say 10, five, and five, and then say that we could be in liability, and then you say, well, so that's all. Thank you.
Counsel Laza?
I just don't buy what the manager's selling on liability. 20 years ago, we had no liability. If anybody believes that, we got a bridge on Mill Street we can sell you. We have a town engineer, two town engineers. As a matter of fact, Matthew's a town engineer. I don't understand when you have a draft unless the terms of the performance of the company you're hiring is going to change. We all know maybe the number on the financial change, but the duties of running the sewer plant or the water plant, if the duties have changed, like when we added the filtration plant, that's a big change, okay? Now you have to take on a filtration plant, and depending on how it's also dealt. But I was never a fan of the 20-year contracts. I always thought, we always had five-year contracts, but times change, people change, council changes. And as you can see what the cost is nowadays, maybe it should have went out to bid at some point, and in a shorter term, and a lot of times when you have a short-term contract, the company usually stays on their toes because they know they're up for a renewal. Now, in this case here, it's a 20 and a five-year renewal, renewal, renewal. At some point, if we're dissatisfied, you move on. But to turn around and spend that kind of money and say, well, we're just trying to protect ourselves from liability, there's liability in everything we do 20 years ago to today. I just don't buy that as the part, I do agree with Counsel Katrona, you do have to have a lawyer, and he does review it, but I didn't know you had to have a lawyer to write it. Because I thought in-house, I think our engineers and our people know what it takes to run the sewer plant. I know back in the day, maybe I'm assuming too much here, Haymoclock was a hands-on engineer, town engineer, and when it came to the landfill and when it came to the, yes, we did have experts in certain areas. But the money that we pour into letting everybody outside of the box do the work, I'm questioning, what are we doing inside of the box? Why do we need a town engineer if we sublet all the engineering? That's my point. So again, to Mr. Katrona's point, when it comes to legal fees, I have a hard time butting on that. You know, I understand that, you know, everybody's busy and things to do, but to say the only reason why you hired the lawyers for liability, I don't buy it. Thank you.
So just a point of clarification, I think, it's not a 20-year contract and then successive five-year contract, renewals.
That's what it was.
This contract was a five-year, five-year renewal, five-year renewal, five-year renewal. So that's specifically, so there is no 20-year and then five more on that, just as a point of clarification. And then...
My point is, Mr. Chairman, I don't need it clarified to know that it wasn't a 20-year contract.
I'm just saying, Counsel, with all due respect, I'm saying that for the public. You stated it was a 20-year contract with five-year renewals. I'm just stating for the public, it's a five-year contract with five-year renewals.
My point was, if you don't go out to bid at all, we know competitive bidding brings in better pricing. Sitting in bed with one guy and constantly just say, oh, things are good, it's easier just to go this way, it's easier to go this way, and let's just keep doing what we're doing. I, like I said, I wouldn't, I just can't buy it. Thank you.
So, well, just, not to belabor this point, but this contract is a five-year contract. If we're not happy with the performance of the contract now, we can get out of it, and I believe every year afterwards, we can get out of it. So it's not another five years, it's with a one-year notice. If I'm correct, that's what we...
I understand that.
Okay, so we are holding this type of company accountable by a five-year initial term, and every year afterwards, we can get out of that contract. Am I, I am correct on that, correct?
Point of order.
Excuse me?
Point of order.
What's your point of order?
Are we talking about the attorney fee or the contract?
We were talking about the contract itself.
But the agenda is about the attorney's fee.
You're right, it's about the attorney's fees. You are correct.
Okay.
Okay, thank you, Counsel Mike. Your point stands. Any further discussion on the attorney's fees?
I do have something, oh, go ahead.
No, you were first, go ahead, Counsel.
We've had a lot of discussion, going way back about attorney fees, and everybody's upset about attorney fees. You're either happy with the attorneys or you're not. If you want to hire someone else, hire someone else and be done with it. But, you know, I think that everybody's happy with it, so you get what you pay for, and let's move on. Thank you.
Just as a point, I, I think in this point, and we've had this discussion last year, it's not the performance of the attorney on this, it's how much we spent on the attorney on this, and the reasons why we, why we did that. So it's not on the performance of the attorney, it's the amount of money that we spend constantly on attorney's fees for every little thing that goes on. This is a big project, but go ahead, Counsel Nash.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. We did take this up at DPW Subcommittee a week ago. It was discussed.
You've got to speak into the mic.
I'm sorry, I'm usually loud. This was discussed at DPW Subcommittee last week. It did receive favorable recommendation to Counsel to approve, and I just want to make sure that we're clear on this, this is not a renewal, this is a new contract, five-year terms. I think there could be confusion as we were discussing the contract end of this, but I have no problem with the legal fees to clear up any sort of confusion that could have resulted from the request for quotes or request for proposals that had been received by the town. We had one that was selected from two responsive bidders, if you will. And then when there was discrepancy, I would not wanted to have left any sort of question remaining when it came to liability, as the Town Manager has stated. We've had conversations in the past about this, I seem to think it came up committee at some point. So I have no problem supporting this transfer of $3,680 to cover the remainder, remaining balance of the legal fees. Thank you.
Counsel Katrona, did you have something? Do you have something on the attorney's fees?
I would just like to clarify that both Matt and I are engineers, we are not lawyers, and we are not qualified when it comes to legal language and contracts, especially on something to this size. So although we read a lot of contracts and have a lot of knowledge and some, and definitely put our two cents into drafting this contract, and we're very active participants and putting a lot of time into this, when it comes to liability issues and legalese, we weren't, we didn't go to law school. We're not qualified to make recommendations when two parties are, have conflicting views. So we had to defer to our attorney when it came to the liability issues.
Thank you.
And I, I mean, we read things our own way, and they were reading their own things their own way, and we really had to, honestly, we had to take the legalese out of it, to tell you the truth, because they had proposed legalese and we had a different view of it. And until we took those legalese out of it and talked as engineers, it didn't make sense. Once we did that and we could separate the legalese, then we could figure out which two parties came to it. But it did, we were having a legal conflict with what we had put in and what they wanted to put in. I don't know how better to say that. I will say that we were completely involved in the process. It wasn't that we weren't. This was a very big undertaking, and it's not what we did in the past with the renewals. The renewals were renewals of the same terms, there was no renegotiating of those terms. That helps.
Thank you. Anything further? All those in favor? Opposed?
I'm opposed.
You're opposed? Change of vote? Motion carries. Did you count, did you get who opposed? Counsel Katrona, Counsel Laza. Item 14, vote to ratify the contract with Beta Group for the pavement management system in the amount of $21,500 to be funded through the EOAF grant, the grant which was accepted by this Council on November 5th, 2018, item 21. Is there a motion?
Still move.
Second. Discussion? Counsel Nash?
It's received favorable recommendation from the DPW Subcommittee that was held last Monday night, and I don't know that it's in the packet, but I think it is. There was a detailed listing, maybe it's not here, between the two engineering firms that had bid, this amount of $21,500 was the lesser of the two bids received. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Laza?
Mr. Town Manager, if you could explain to the public what this is, as far as it's another study to find out, correct me if I'm wrong, what the priority streets are and priority problems in our roads in Southbridge. Am I correct in saying that? And we already have a study done, but it's got age on it. Am I correct?
You're correct.
I too, it passed favorably, I'm not a member of DPW. With all due respect, here's another example I personally feel that a lot of finding out which road is the worst and which one do you do first? Well, if there's sewer and water study down below and gas lines and stuff, it's a reconstruction, I get it. But when it comes down to asphalt, for me, if you, this town has a plan already that has age on it, if you take an actual person, DPW or somebody like our assistant engineer or something, if you look at where you would repair them first, Main Thoroughfares, schools, businesses, business districts, and work in the worst cases, you drive around Southbridge, you don't need an engineer to tell you which road's the worst. When you see a curbing falling into the street and the street falling in, or a manhole going in, I mean, we are very capable, we have a good DPW, and we have a good person at the helm. When they see a manhole going down, let's fix the manhole. When the roads are really bumpy coming down Main Street, let's micro-grind it, and the plan is to do the water lines and shut-offs and then pave Main Street. That's all done in-house. And to me, paving is, there are sealants, there are crack sealing program we have, there is grind and pave, and there's reconstruction. It's really not rocket science, we're going to go study it again. I'm going to be voting against this tonight. I would rather take the money and put it towards a road or a sidewalk. Thank you.
Did you want the Town Manager to answer your question then? You did have a question.
I just...
Mr. Town Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First, I'd like to say, Counsel Laza, you're correct that this is, there was an old study in place, what they call a pavement management plan, it was done a number of years ago, and I'll let Heather talk about the specific dates. We were asked, I was asked by, actually, there's been a lot of interest by Town Councils as it relates to roads and which roads we should fix and what we should do, and it's been frankly, quite extensive. I think if there's any issue that Counselors have talked to me about, it's the issue of roads and what we can do. At least one of the Counselors had brought forward to me saying that the old pavement management plan was outdated, and the information was not as useful as it potentially could be, that the Town Council was going to make an effort at doing everything it could to improve the roads, and could I find some resources to upgrade the pavement management plan? And with that Counselor's comments in mind, I researched the Community Compact Grant from the state of Massachusetts. They have grants that basically allow us to do planning, to make sure that our capital plans are in good shape, to make sure that our pavement management plans are in shape. They want the towns to make sure that when we spend Chapter 90 money, we're spending it in the best way possible, and that we're getting the most out of every dollar spent. With that, I applied for the grant. I was fortunate enough to get, I believe it was about $25,000.
$28,000.
$28,000 is a grant from the state of Massachusetts to upgrade our pavement management plan, so no local tax dollars, tax dollars per se were spent. I was fortunate to do it, and I've been working with Heather. She's had a long list of projects ahead of this, but I'm fortunate to say this is the beginning of that process to get it upgraded. I know that we are going to be looking at adding potential money for roads coming up in a couple of different ways. I think it's important that we have a plan that makes sense and that we utilize our Chapter 90. What limited Chapter 90 funds we get, we use in the best way possible. So I think it was, it was a good program to move forward with. Again, it's nice that we're not taking out of local tax dollars. We could not, as you say, take the money out and fix a road with it. That's not the way the program is developed by the state of Massachusetts. So it really is just a planning grant, and that's what we're doing. With that, if our DPW Director has any further comments as, as to the date of the timing of the plan and why it made sense to update the plan, I'll defer to her on that issue.
Just a quick comment. If we have a study that was, Heather, what year was that study done, may I ask?
The previous study is about 10 years old now.
10 years old.
I will say that those studies are recommended to be updated every 10 years and to be reassessed because what it is, it's giving...
I agree with everything that you're saying, Heather, but to my point...
Could you let her finish?
I asked her a question, she answered, and I want to address the Manager's comment. I thank you for that answer. If you have a 10-year plan, this is where the common sense, I'm losing, I'm losing touch here with, with the, with how this works. 10 years ago, they told you, we had a study, these are your worst roads in Southbridge. And in 10 years, we have not done the roads. It's a fair assumption that those roads get worse, and maybe some other ones became worse behind them. But that study still told you the worst roads in Southbridge, they are probably, and I agree, are still even worse than what they were 10 years ago. They're falling apart. I drive them every day. So for me to turn around and say, right away, it's a grant, well, that's still your tax dollars, still your tax dollars at work, grants are not free, they're tax dollars at state and federal level that come out of you. To the point, you have a document on a shelf, this is what municipalities do that aggravate me, the study's 10 years old, the worst roads in Southbridge, they're still the worst roads in Southbridge. Plan of attack, go after them. Money, I get it. Manager's got to, Council's got to do the money. The previous Council tried their best, $100,000, this and that. But the thing is, when a citizen wakes up in the morning, lives here, that doesn't live somewhere else, and they drive on the road and they say, they haven't done any roads, we all hear it. Counsel Adams is the one that put me on, I turned around and said, wow, yeah, we're going to put 100, and 100, and 100. Manager's been here five years, what have we paved? If it's not a grant by the state or the feds, we've really not done anything. So for me, I would grab the 10-year-old study, I mean, if I had a truck that's, you know, the study said that it's in rough shape, 10 years from now, it's not going to say it's any better. It's still worse than it was 10 years ago, so take your study, the city, I'll bet your money. I'm voting against this, you pass it, you'll come up with the same answers as the first study. Thank you.
Counsel Nash?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you, to the Director. Director Blakely, how many private roads have become part of the DPW's purview in the last 10 years, from private developments such as those condos or the homes that are up, so forth? There are additional roads that wouldn't have been covered back in the study, the last study 10 years ago, so...
And I want to explain the study. The study is, it's a study because they go out and reevaluate the rules, but it's not just a study, it's a tool. It's a tool that's going to be interactive from here going forward. It will give us a baseline, and then we'll be able to put in, okay, you guys find an extra $100,000, where should we spend that $100,000 to get the best bang for our buck? It's an interactive tool, and once we do spend that money, then you update the grade of those roads that you've done, and that shows you where you go next time. That wasn't done in that first study. We were given the database and then it stopped. That was right about the time that we lost the Director, and I became interim, and I had that position for a long time, and there just wasn't enough manpower to do that type of stuff. We're at the point now, which we did use the data, we were able to institute a crack sealing program based on the list that they said we should crack seal. We had been very successful in crack sealing many roads over the last five years, which have extended the life of those roads, so those roads didn't get a lot worse. We hopefully, in the future, will be putting more and more money in, which is where it gets critical. Because right now, I've documented in the next three years, all of our Chapter 90 funds is really tied up with projects that we already have going. So if we do put in more money, we wanna know that we're putting that money into places that we can get the best bang for our buck, whether it be the worst road or whether it be maybe not the worst road. It's a balancing act. You wanna bring up the conditions of the roads everywhere, not just the worst roads. Because if you keep putting your money, it is shown, if you keep putting your money into worse roads, your roads are just gonna keep getting worse, overall. You have to put money into preventive measures, not just doing the worst roads you will get behind. So although, and I understand that, I wish we had enough money to fund it. Honestly, I'm the one who stood up here saying for the last, I don't know, five, six years that I need a million dollars, I need a million dollars. And I know it sounded like a broken record, but that was what the study said. I predict it's gonna say it's worse, not better than that, it's gonna be worse, it's gonna be more than that. But to also have the tool to be able to say, well, I do have $200,000, and let's take an objective engineering approach with all this data, and pick the list of roads that we should go out and evaluate and say, oh, okay, can we do this one? What's the condition of the water main? What's the condition of the sewer main? Okay, this is a good candidate. I know, I, I think $21,000 is a good investment over the next 10 years. I really do. For $2,000 in a year, you get a tool that can be updated and can be used and is an interactive tool. It's not just a study that's gonna sit on the shelf, it's an interactive program that we're going to actually be able to use as engineers so that we can come to you with a list and say, these are the options that we're looking at. Does that make some sense?
May I continue?
Go ahead, Counsel Nash, and then I'll go.
Thank you.
Counsel Nash first, and then Counsel Lazo.
Thank you. Thank you, Director. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, I certainly respect what my colleague to my right has said. I really wish that in the past, action had resulted from previous studies. We've seen this happen more than once, and as the good counselor has said, this happens in municipal business. Studies sit on shelves, we've seen it with the fire station. We've got good stuff, recent data to look at, recent recommendations, we're gonna have the latest and greatest when it comes to roads when this goes forward. We need that. I think it will spark conversation, it'll give the DPW and engineers something to look at, some recommendations to make, it'll give council more ammo or fuel to the fire to actually take action, maybe to find some other avenues to, to find funding, or to send a, an override to the ballot. That needs to happen. This can't sit around anymore. We can sit here and say, oh, it's not worth it, but it certainly is worth it. 10 years is long enough, it's time to move forward with this, and quite frankly, I think we've talked this to death. Thank you.
Counsel Lazo?
My whole point, and I, I don't think there's any councils that disagree on a lot of what we're talking about when it comes to roads. To your credit and to the DPW credit, nobody puts Band-Aids on roads better than the Southbridge DPW. And I live on the worst road in Southbridge, and I know the next road that I go on to is the second worst road, and then I go to Stirbridge and I see more roads, but I gotta tell you, when you have this inclement weather where it rains and it snows and it freezes and it hot, and you got these potholes and you got these heaves and everything, Heather, I pay you a compliment on putting the Band-Aids on all these roads to keep them somewhat passable, but my whole point is, to my fellow colleagues up here, is it needs surgery. The Band-Aids are gone in one storm, you're back putting more Band-Aids. The cost of all the Band-Aids, it's gonna stop. So for me, I have some ideas where to get that money. Let's see what this budget session holds, and, uh, I know, uh, there are counselors up here that would like to see, it's gotta be put as the priority. Spreading the butter thin, not gonna work this year. We need to actually tackle some of these things and get them done. We need surgery on the roads, I'm gonna continue to beat the drum throughout the budget session. When there's a free $20,000, put it into a road account, put it into a road account. Grind some of these streets that are simple, grind and paves, where you don't need all kinds of engineering. Thank you.
Counsel Man?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. I do agree with my, um, my fellow counselors up here with, um, the Band-Aid situation, surgery and stuff. Um, to you, Mr. Chair, we were supposed to, and I'm sorry if I don't remember, have some meetings with regards to past projects that haven't, um, you know, from past years, that there's just money sitting there.
Mm-hmm.
Um, we haven't looked at that yet. I think, um, maybe perhaps before the budget, and maybe we can find some extra money in there before budget season comes full force. Um, and I think the priority of the roads should take just as much priority as, like, the issues that we're having down at the sewer, uh, the waste treatment, um, when all those, 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 um, issues came to us, and it was like holy, you know, timoli, seven to eight million dollars, and then a couple of years later, it's a couple more million dollars, you know? I mean, it just adds up and adds up and adds up, and we don't want that to happen with the roads. And I, the roads are really bad in Southbridge, I do agree. Um, I go to some neighboring towns when I have to go and do my morning routine, and some of the roads that I pass through, we'll just say in Oxford, are in worse shape than some of the roads I've driven on here in Southbridge, and I give credit to our DPW though for fixing those roads before they get that bad. So if, um, I mean, that's a suggestion, just looking at the, the projects that are just sitting there.
We'll take it up when we have the special meeting on the budget, upcoming budget. Anything from this side? Counselor Marquetti?
Um, this is a grant, and as far as I'm concerned, it counts as priming the pump. I realize that grants are taxpayers' money, but there's, there's no fiscal consequence to the town on this, this is a grant. Now, people that come here and do the work when we get these grants, they may buy breakfast, they may have lunch, they'll get some gas, maybe they'll have a beer or two, and then they'll, when they get paid, they go home to wherever they live and they buy cars and houses and things for their kids. So it's good for the economy in Southbridge, and it's good for the economy, for the regional economy, so I'm in favor of this. It's a grant, let's, let's go with it. Thank you.
Counsel Adams?
Mr. Chair, through you, I know we had this conversation at the DPW Subcommittee meeting, I just wanna reiterate, you know, if, if we didn't receive this grant, somebody else was going to grab it. So, and this was specifically for the study, the study's 10 years old. Uh, Heather gave a brief to the town council back in 2017 with the road study, and I, I wish I had a million dollars, and we all had a million dollars a year to fix the roads. We do not, nor do I. But this is the start. We put $100,000 away last year's budget, 200 this year, hopefully in this year's budget as far as helping ourselves a little bit here within the town to fix our roads instead of being so dependent upon always grabbing grants or state funds. Grant is taxpayer money, got it? 10 years ago, I believe this study was paid for directly by the Southbridge taxpayers, if I'm not mistaken.
It was used, it was Chapter 90 funds.
So it's Chapter, okay, so thank you. Um, so grab this grant, we're utilizing Chapter 90 money, we're using CDBG money, we're utilizing any other funds that we can find. That includes, uh, now that, and I talked to the town manager, the complete Streets Program, which can give the town of Southbridge $80,000 to $400,000 per year, so possibly, on main thoroughfares through, in and out of this town. So we are taking a look at a lot of these things, and I, and I do understand, study after study, and they become nothing but door, uh, propping up a, open a door, you know, keeping the door open. But we gotta start somewhere, and again, I'll say this, if we didn't grab this grant, somebody else, some other town's gonna grab this grant, utilize it for the same thing, and now we're gonna try to figure out what, what type of technology we're gonna need 10 years down the road, or what type of, uh, infrastructure we're gonna need 10, uh, down the road. So I don't see anything wrong with this grant, utilize it to the best of our ability. I believe it certifies you guys as well?
It gives us training and.
It gives you the training.
Yep.
And then we, and then this is renewal every single year, it's not 21,000, but it's like around 5,000, I believe, to keep the software up to date?
We're not, that's a different, we don't have to renew it this year.
You don't have to renew it.
No, not, not with the program that we went, there's no renewal cost.
So just a, end note, I'm in favor of this, uh, this small grant that's gonna help the town and DPW out. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm just gonna express my frustration, because my frustration is more detailed to the fact that we should be debating what roads we're gonna be spending money on today, as opposed to whether we're gonna award a grant or not. Town manager went out for this grant 14 months ago. This grant was awarded to the town of Southbridge in November of 2018. The goal of the town manager was that he would have a list of priority of roads based on the pavement management study. That's what we should be angry about tonight, not about spending $21,000 to award a grant. We should be angry at the fact that we don't have a study in our hands to, when we get into this budget season, to debate what roads are our priority. I get that people are busy, and we're not the micromanagers that everybody thinks we are. If we were, we should have been, I know Counsel Adams has gone up to the town manager multiple times saying, what's up with the pavement study? What's up with the pavement study? When this came up this week, I thought we were gonna be talking about the actual study, not the fact that we're gonna go out and get the software to figure out what roads to do, to delay. That is my frustration, that is where I am most disappointed, and where we should really be frustrated at. And I agree with my colleague, Counsel Lazo, about studies, because we'll sit here with this document, and we'll talk about a DPW school facilities merger study analysis, and we'll talk about the school maintenance facilities, and then a year from now, we'll be talking about a pavement study that will sit on a shelf. That's my disappointment, because yes, we could have a million studies, and what do we do about it? We keep debating about what's up, what's up, what's going on with this, but we're not the town management, we're the counselors. We keep asking for this information, and we don't get it. So that's my frustration. Stuff is supposed to be due by January 15th, we don't have it. Maybe we'll get it in a day and a half, I don't know, but all the studies in the world aren't gonna fix what we have to do. We have action, and this council has been very proactive in getting the projects done in the last couple of years that I've been here, and that's my frustration. Counsel Lazo?
Again, I agree with you 100%, uh, Ms. Chairman. We're counselors, and we're frustrated. We're frustrated because nothing's getting done in the timely manner that it should be done, and that's called management. We're not the managers. The town manages the manager. You know, he talks about the team, the team, he's got some great team players, he's got a couple of team players that aren't so great. But we are the, when I always say the buck stops here, we go through a budget session, and, and in good faith, the council's put 100,000, another 100,000, then we're gonna put this over there and coming up with ideas, because the roads are the priority, and then the roads don't get done. And then they call the counselors or they look at us, and they say, why do you let everybody just keep giving you lip service? Or another study, or something like that? It needs to be tangible, TM, to the manager. This needs to, you know, public relations is great, it's one of your strong points. Substance is not one of your great points. When things get done, when roads are tired and things are fixed, that's what they call tangible. We did it. Mission accomplished. Good for council, good for manager, good for DPW. Something's gotta change, is what I'm gonna say. Thank you.
Any further discussion on this?
Yeah.
Miss, huh?
I'd like to respond.
Okay. Ms. Town Manager?
Uh, thank you, and, uh, Counsel Lazo, thank you for your comments, but I, I do feel the need to respond. Um, you are correct, first of all, that Counselor Adams has come to me a number of times asking me about the study and appropriation study, and, and as a result of that, I would talk to our DPW Director about the timing of that study. Now, in all honesty, and I think this council is very well aware, we've had a tremendous amount of projects within DPW as of recent days, everything from Main Street to just tremendous amounts of project that are happening down at the sewer treatment plant, to the water line that's going on from here to Charlton, um, to the renegotiation of the 20-year sewer contract. In, in the DPW, and I'm, I'm not making excuses, I'm simply stating facts, the DPW is inundated with, with projects. As a result, frankly, in my opinion, of projects that should have been done many, many years ago. So as I'm asking the DPW Director to do this particular project, and I'll say this, the reason the project is even there is because I went out of my way to get funding to get this grant so that we could do an updated pavement management plan. So obviously, I didn't wanna do that to waste my own time, I did it for a reason, I wanted to get the plan done. But it's awfully difficult for me to say to the DPW Director, I want you to cast aside these major projects that you're working on and make this your priority. My department heads are extremely good. My department heads set up their own list of priorities and important projects they have to do. Uh, I agree that this is important, but it is not as important as many other projects. A study doesn't rank over fixing Main Street, or doing the water line at Charlton, or fixing the sewer treatment plant, it doesn't rank that high in comparison to those priorities. So I, I will take the blame for working with the DPW Director of setting which priorities come first. I'm glad we got this to the table finally to move forward with. It's not a lack of desire to do this, it's simply a lack of, of time and effort, and I'll say this clearly, that staff, that too many projects have been left in this town for many, many years that just didn't get done, and this DPW Director, Assistant DPW Director, have been working their tails off to do these projects, and you have seen them all come before you, time after time after time, she's got a list of projects that you guys are voting on. So I don't, uh, you know, I would have liked it to be done faster, but the simple answer is it just didn't rank high enough in the priority to be done as quickly as I would have liked, that the DPW would have liked, but I don't argue with her listing of priorities.
Mr. Town Manager, I'm just gonna leave it at this. Sure. Let me tell you this, I, I have no dispersions on the DPW, I know how hard they work, and I appreciate everything they do. And this is in reflection of her getting this done. This is a reflection when I stated, these are your goals and objectives, this is what you worked with, this council, for us to approve, and when we approved it revised October 10th, 2019, it says, "Town Manager will provide to the town council an immediately priority list of roads and sidewalks according to a new pavement management plan." At that point, Mr. Manager, she wasn't able to even get it out the door. So I'm not faulting the DPW Director on this, I'm saying, why would you have us, allow you to put this in your goals and objectives if you knew that this plan, if we hadn't even awarded a contract yet? That's my point. It's not on her performance, it's on the fact that we have it in our goals and objectives, and you knew that we hadn't even put it out for a contract yet. That's my point, not her performance. It, it's the fact that all along, I thought that we were gonna have a plan, and I'll just leave it at that. That's my frustration with it. Any further conversation, discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Item 15, vote to ratify Amendment Number 4 to the contract with Whitewater for the operation of the water system, extending the existing contract for six months, which includes a mechanism to automatically extend the contract for an additional six months unless the town provides adequate notice not to elect the additional extension. Is there a motion?
So move.
Discussion? Mr. Manager?
Through you, Mr. Chairman. So obviously, this is an extension of the contract so that we can begin negotiating a new contract for Whitewater. You remember what happened as we negotiated Viola contract, we just wanna make sure that we have time to negotiate the long-term contract for the water as well.
Anything to add on that? Counsel Marquetti? Or did you?
Um, I was just wondering, why six months, and then we have to do this again in another six months? Why wouldn't you just make it a year?
It, it's automatic to a year if we don't.
Right.
Write a letter saying that it's not.
Okay.
So it's already automatic.
Thank you.
It's six months if we don't need it, it's a year if we need it.
So we won't be voting on this again in six months?
No, you won't be voting on it in six months.
Thank you, thank you.
Counsel Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just wanna make sure all the dates are correct, because it just seems odd to me that it says March 9th, 2000, up at the top, and then underneath at the last paragraph, it says March 9th, 2020. I just wanna make sure that, that just all adds up. I, I, it just, maybe it's just a coincidence that everything's March 9th.
The existing contract goes to March 9th?
It's, okay, so, but was it?
It started March 9th, 2000.
Oh, okay.
And the new one will extend, it, it, this is renewing it to starting March 9th, 2020, to go for another year.
March 9th, 2021.
21, yes.
Okay, there's just a lot of March 9ths with the twos in there, so.
Lots of twos and nines, yes.
Thank you. Thank you.
Any further discussion? See none, roll call, Madam Secretary?
Council Adams?
Yes.
Council Katrona?
Yes.
Council Daniel?
Yes.
Council Jovan?
Yes.
Council Lazo?
Yes.
Council Manna?
Yes.
Council Marquetti?
Yes.
Council Nash?
Yes.
Council Steve?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item 16, vote to approve the reappropriation of funds originally appropriated for project known as Main Street Valve Replacement Project Number 64890, approved at the June 27th, 2019 Town Council meeting Agenda Item 17, to now be appropriated for Main Street Valve and Water Main Replacement Project. Is there a motion?
So move.
Second. DPW? Do you have any comment?
Sure, thank you, Chairman, I'll be happy through you. This item was discussed during the last DPW Subcommittee Meeting on Monday night. I think that the Agenda item, as it's read, explains it clearly enough, where this is a change in wording, because water mains need to be addressed under Main Street. If we can keep it that simple, that was our conclusion as well at Subcommittee unanimously favorable recommendation for approval. Thank you.
Heather, do you have anything else you wanna ask?
Nope. I, I think that it basically clearly says, we wanna revise it to say not just valves, but also water main.
Yep. And I appreciate the fact that you and your department took a look at those water mains, and we're gonna reconfigure the whole road, get it all done in one project.
Right. We, when we started looking at those valves, and there were some of them over 100 years old, not operational, we looked at the year of the water main, and I'm the first one to say, "Oh, a, a water main's gonna last 100 years." But, in this case, we're butting up against that 100 years, so I wouldn't wanna leave them and then have that fail on us a, a year later. I think you'd all have my head.
Thank you. And this goes along with the whole Main Street reconfiguration that we're doing?
Correct. The, the next item is to do a change order for the engineer that's actually doing the roadway work, and so that was part of the purpose here.
Any further discussion? See none, roll call?
Council Katrona?
Yes.
Council Daniel?
Yes.
Council Jovan?
Yes.
Council Lazo?
Yes.
Council Manna?
Yes.
Council Marquetti?
Yes.
Council Nash?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item 17, vote to ratify Amendment Number 1 to VHB's contract for Main Street resurfacing and traffic signal improvements to include design and construction oversight for the replacement of the water mains within the project area for a total of $32,500, increasing the total contract to $255,250.
So move.
Discussion? Council Marquetti?
I just have a question, this is all grant money, correct?
Uh, it's grant and Chapter 90 monies, right? Correct? For this project?
Correct. And the water mains will be funded out of the water enterprise, which is where the $300,000 is already coming from. So the engineering work, the $32,500, will actually be paid out of that water main and valve replacement fund. The design will be out of that, what we just voted, and, so the 32.5, and then the rest of it. When we do the work, part of the funding will now, for the water main part, will come out of the water main funds.
Thank you.
It's how our enterprise fund usually works, you pay for the infrastructure that you do.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Opposed, unanimous, all present. Item 18, vote to declare the 1995 Kohler 80K generator at the Mass Ave Pump Station a surplus to be scrapped and disposed of in accordance with Mass General Law, Chapter 30B, Section 15, as the generator is not operational. Is there a motion?
So move.
Second. Council Nash?
Sure, thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. Uh, this was discussed at DPW Subcommittee under New Business. It was an item that the director and the Water Division Manager had brought up, in regards to a vintage 1995 generator. They have solicited, I think quotes, or at least some measure of service, from certified contractors that would look at this particular piece of equipment, and they've determined that, for the few parts that are available, it's not operational, it's not worth the investment, and it is not a long-term solution, so they're looking to scrap it. This was unanimously recommended for a favorable vote here at Council from the Subcommittee. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion?
Um, correct. If you remember, two meetings ago, I believe it was, we had a list of scrap items that were coming from the Mass Ave Pump Station because it was being decommissioned. This was just overlooked. This generator actually had failed on us about two years ago, it was hit by lightning, and we had looked into replacing it at that time. We had been operating on a rental generator for quite an extended period of time. It wasn't a, the parts are just not readily available for this generator, because they're not manufactured anymore, and what they could find would have cost us more than buying a new generator. So we decided that, at the time, we weren't gonna fix it, knowing the pump station was gonna be decommissioned, and now we're just trying to get rid of the large piece of junk that's sitting there, that used to be called a generator.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Opposed, unanimous, all present. Council's forum, Council Lazo, what's that with you tonight?
Couple of things, first of all, I went up to the high school, and I know we mentioned it at Subcommittee, I meant at Subcommittee. We built a $64 million middle high school, and we also, the town, put in a solar panel project. And, there was no, to my knowledge, and maybe the town manager can comment to this, I don't know who drew it up, that the solar panels would be built up against the school fields and up the hill towards the building. Normally, and, we built that high school for the scenic view, the hill, the, the way it was structured, and they're knocking off 32 feet of a hill, they're building right up against the property. I don't know if that's something that can be stopped, or, at this point, but I think there's poor planning on the side of the, whoever was in charge of the solar panels, on how far you could build them. Although I understand what they do, and, and it generates revenue, I think we have to think in Southbridge from now on, on where they start and stop. Because, even the wildlife's being pushed, we understand that, but, when you have public buildings and you're putting them up against the fields and up against, not good. And then, later on, they'll put fencing and stuff like that, but, I just don't know if there's any answer to that, where the high school is. Secondly, I have one issue that a lot of people are talking about, and I know I can't talk about a personnel issue, Mr. Chairman, as far as mentioning names, but we had a personnel situation, and I'm directing this through you to the manager. I just wanna vent that the issue has been dabbled on and dabbled on, where usually it's 30 days, the whole process of handling a personnel issue. This one personnel issue in the Fire Department just embellished itself. And it did, because of the lack of management in keeping everything into the focus. I went and talked to other management people that would handle the same situation, and it would have never took as long as it took, or is taking, to handle a problem like this, it was so simple. And again, it just, why in Southbridge does everything turn into that fiasco, instead of A, B, C, 1, 2, 3, it's done? We need to handle our problems better, we need to work together, and I just think on that one there, it was very poorly handled on the management side. Thank you.
Thank you. Council Nash?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. Happy New Year. This is our first meeting of 2013. Oh, 2013, oh gosh. I really am sorry. 2020.
He's a Republican.
And I am a Republican. I wanted to just make mention that, in the very near future, it will be nearing election season, make sure that, if you're interested, you go to the Town Clerk's Office, pull papers, nomination papers will be available soon. I will not be running for reelection, so I know at least one seat will be vacated. I'd also like to mention that Southbridge Community Television has a cable advisory committee, which is currently in need of any members, we have zero, as I understand. So I certainly hope that folks will step out. I know periodically, we get the vacancies made available to us, but, they do great work in the office down here in the back corner of this room, and they could use a little bit of guidance and assistance from members of the community. So, if you're willing, please step up. That's all I have for tonight, thank you.
Thank you. Council Steve?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. A couple of quick things. One is that a resident called asking about Crescent Street sewers?
Kinda hard to hear.
Okay, a resident called asking about Crescent Street, and the fact that she's under the impression, she was told years and years ago, that the wa, that the street is actually a public street, she's been told more recently that it's a private street, and has, is having issues with backing, with sewer lines backing up and old clay pipes that are in horrible shape down there. I haven't seen it myself, because I don't look at sewer lines, but, I was hoping to get some clarification of who actually owns that street, what, what the town's responsibility is for that street, is it public, is it private?
I, I didn't hear the name of the street.
Crescent Street.
Crescent Street.
Crescent Street.
I am going to have to look into it.
Okay.
Now, I will say this, everybody owns their sewer lateral to the sewer main, which means you own it from your house out to the main line.
Right, okay.
Into the street.
Okay.
I know we've had sewer line backups, I know that the wa, waste, the wastewater treatment plant was out there on Thursday night.
Okay.
I believe what they determined, there was nothing wrong with the main itself, it was an issue with the lateral.
Okay.
I also know that we got a request for sewer main, a sewer lateral repair today.
Okay.
So I believe what she's discussing is her own sewer lateral.
Okay.
Not the main.
Okay, okay.
I do believe Crescent itself is a public road, but I don't wanna misspeak, but I believe what you're talking about as far as the sewer line has been determined to be an issue with the lateral.
Okay, okay. A second thing is, to kind of tie into what we were talking about earlier about grants, I'd like to know where we are, where, what are we now seeking in far as grants from Community Compact, the Municipal Vulnerability Program, and any other grants, that, what we're currently seeking? I know that you have, you have a list of, of, we've already saw, but what do we, what's in the process now?
Mr. Chairman, so, so the one that we just applied for, and we got rejected on, we were only able to apply for one more Community Compact grant this year, it was an IT grant, and we tried to apply for some money, Karen and her treasurer, they asked me, Melissa had asked me to try to find some funds for Munis, and we were rejected. So that one, we were rejected on. I know that Andy's applying, once again, for money to fund the curbside collection position thing that he's doing again. So those are the two current ones that we're working on. As you know, the police and fire department do regular grants on a pretty regular basis, but the Community Compact grants, there's none eligible at this time, so we'll have to wait until they open again.
Have you ever looked into the, I, I know I've mentioned this before, the Municipal Vulnerability Program?
I'm sure you said it again?
The MVP, Municipal Vulnerability Program?
No, we have not applied for those, as a matter of fact, yet, you have raised as an interest.
Yes, I have.
We are looking at, is, is, I think that, I forget, I think it was...
Looking at complete streets.
Council Adams, I think, was talking about, we're actually sending Eric to learn about the road grant for Safe Streets and for widening streets, and using them for different types of travel, for instance, bicycles and stuff. We are sending Eric to a meeting to learn more about that, and see if we can potentially get funds for that as well. We have not worked on the MVP grant at all. If you would like to work, and I'd be happy to work with you, to look at some possibilities for that.
Okay. And the third thing, which is a quick announcement, that there, if, for those who are interested in doing some, some, learning some skills about, for, for your own household purposes and so forth, Billy Bolster and Kristen Selmer, I guess is her last name is, are doing a soap making class at the library on Thursday at 6:30. That's all I had tonight, thanks.
Thank you. Council Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. Counselor Steve, actually, he just triggered something. And this has to do with my street, it looks like there's like a water, I don't, water main or valve, where you go down the pipe on the sidewalk, the cap is like half-broke, so you can actually see down in there.
Is it right at your house, or where is it?
No, it's like between my house, on the sidewalk.
Yeah, do you know what number it's at? It's the...
It's between 20 and 24, yeah. I mean, you can just, I mean, if somebody walks down the even side, they'll be able to see it.
Yeah, I'll have the Water Department go check into it tomorrow.
Okay, I, yeah, thank you for triggering my memory on that. So thank you, that's it for you. Next, the Town Manager, through the Chair, 80 Hamilton Street, I had talked to you about that in December, at the December meeting, who takes care of that property? I haven't seen anything come through, so I'm just following up on that.
Actually, I think that's the one that the, I think that's the one that the town owns, so we, we did discuss that, and when it comes to spring and stuff, the, the issue, I think you raised with me, was the litter and stuff for that, for that area.
Yeah, and, and, well, not just the litter, the, like, the upkeep, the mowing?
Of the, yeah, the yard work and that kinda stuff. So, that is gonna fall under Heather's responsibility, DPW, because it's a town-owned property, and we've had a very brief conversation, or an email about that.
Okay. Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
And, to Counselor Nash's point, I was gonna say the same exact thing, Counselor Nash, with regard to the local elections, it's coming up. Anyone interested should, you know, pull papers. It is a big commitment, it's a very rewarding commitment, I will not be running again. So, the year vacancy that I had, I'm not sure whose it was, I can't remember anymore, that will be open too, as other, Counselor Nash's seat, I think, are you?
I'm on this.
And, yeah, Counselor Steve, so, come, pull papers, you know, give back to your community, it'd be great to see you out there. Elections matter more locally than they do nationally, so forget about the presidential election, come and vote in your local election. And, Happy New Year to everyone. That's it, thank you.
Thank you, Counsel. Council Marquetti?
Uh, thank you. I've, I've had, I had a chance over the weekend to attend a rally for Senator Markey, and I wanted to thank Michael Segarra there for inviting me. I, I was able to, when he had a question and answer period, I was, I did stand up and ask about trying to get funding for Southbridge, and I specifically mentioned the fire station. So I am out there, I'm trying to talk to different people about funding Southbridge's needs. Today, I met with State Senator Fatman, I explained to him some of the ideas that I have for trying to find some funding. He, he's looking at something called a gateway, trying to expand the Gateway City designations, which would open up more grants for the town of Southbridge, especially for redevelopment. And he's also, he also told me that the Department of Education, the Commissioner, he's trying to get him to come here in the spring, and he, he did mention that he talked to you about this, Mr. Chairman, and, and I'd also like to say to the constituents out there, that I, I am meeting at the Jacob Edwards Library every Thursday at 1:00 PM, and I'd be happy to discuss any questions or problems that anybody has with any town operations. So if any residents can make it at that time, if you can't make it at that time, I'd be, I'm willing to come back in the evening on Thursday, the Southbridge Library is open till 8:00 PM, and I'd be happy to sit down with any of the residents. We've already had a couple of meetings, and they've been very instructive, so thank you very much, thank you.
Thank you. And on behalf of the Fire Station Build Committee, I'd like to thank you, Counselor, for being out there and contacting Congressman Nail, and Senator Markey, and being advocate for that project, as well as all the other projects, but I appreciate it, all the assistance that you do give. Thank you. Council Adams?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. I just, on Thursday, between 6:00 PM and midnight, the 16th of January, Hamilton, parts of Hamilton, Maine and Central, within that corridor, the power will be shut off for National Grid. What they are doing is they're finishing Phase 1 of the Central Street Parking Lot. By midnight that night, it should be completed, and hopefully, we can get Phase 2 and 3 done this coming calendar year. If you don't know the address, you should have received a letter already, so, but if you're not sure if this affects you, you can call the Town Manager's office. Also, I have an email as well, of the different addresses themselves, not names, but just addresses, on Hamilton, Maine and Central Street, within that corridor, where the Central Street Parking Lot is, is being redone. And lastly, this Thursday at the PND, we're gonna receive a update from the Town Manager on liquor licenses. About two months ago, we requested to see if we can get rid of a quota system that's set by the state. I don't foresee that actually happening, unless the state wishes it to be so, but I know the Town Manager came up with some good information from the ABCC that would affect affect our town, and we're not talking about just liquor licenses like package stores or anything like that, we're talking about restaurant licenses. So if you'd like to join us, we'll be there at 6:00 p.m. on this Thursday. That's all I have. Thank you.
Heather, do you have a follow-up?
Yes, I would just like to follow up regarding the electrical shut-off. I know there was some misinformation that was out on Facebook saying that the water was also going to be shut off. This is not true. The water will not be shut off to this area. This will only be affecting the electrical outage, basically immediately adjacent to the Central Street parking lot. If you're in that area, you may experience an electrical outage from 6 to midnight.
Thank you, Heather. Thanks for your update. Council Katrona?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. Just want to let the residents of Southbridge know, on January 29th at 11 o'clock in the morning, there will be a hearing, I believe it's in the Town Manager's office, it's in Town Hall, for the removal of 25 trees on Dresser Hill Road. They've been identified by National Grid. I was speaking with the Town Manager and Heather just before the meeting, and this is for the ProTech to be able to run their lines on that road. So there are some concerned citizens. Just want to let the public know that there is a meeting on January 29th, again, at 11 a.m. So if you're concerned, please attend. The other thing that I wanted to speak about, on December 30th, there was a Telegram and Gazette article. It had to do with a new Southbridge veterinarian hospital that's going to offer an educational program on Worcester Street. It's going to be a joint venture with Bay Path and the Volk High School. It's going to be great for the community. It's going to be a full-service hospital, expected to open in 2021. It's going to serve as a teaching hospital for students interested in pursuing a career in the veterinary field. It's going to be a million-dollar project and add revenue to the town, tax revenue to the town, much needed. So I think that's going to be wonderful for this town. Third thing, I want to thank everybody that came out and participated Saturday in taking down the holiday decorations. I had the opportunity to work with several people. Thank the Clements family, Joe Hewlic, and everybody that showed up. Were able to have the decorations down by 1 o'clock in the afternoon, and it was a beautiful weekend to do that. That's all I have. Thank you.
Council Manager, you had a follow-up for something?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Counsel Katrona, with regard to the hearing on the 29th at 11 a.m. But this is on a Wednesday at 11 o'clock, and is this a public hearing? Because, I mean, there's a lot of people that work, so I'm just curious.
Mr. Town Manager, is that a public hearing from your office?
I'm going to let the DPW Director answer, because she was more deeper involved.
I know we've had this conversation before about, not through you, to you, but conversation about poll hearings and things like that.
It is a public hearing. This is traditionally the timing. We always do them in the middle of the day. You don't have to be present at the hearing to post your concerns, there is a way to post them and write them in, so, and all of those, anything written into an email to me or Matt saying that you're concerned about this will be brought up at the hearing. So you don't have to be present to voice any concerns.
Thank you. As just as a follow-up, and I'm sure Council Manager will agree, we did express our concern to the Town Manager that these hearings shouldn't occur at 11 a.m., that they should try to accommodate perhaps on a late Thursday afternoon when the Town Hall is open, that we have these meetings at that time period so that the residents that actually, you know, those that work, because, you know, that's during a workday, and that's typical, so that's our feedback on that. Not through you, nothing to you.
I'm sorry, I wasn't aware of that, so.
No, that's fine.
But first, I think this is the second hearing I've done, like, in 10 years.
Yeah, no, that's fine. Thank you.
Thank you.
Did I address that okay?
Thank you.
You're all set, Counsel Katrona?
Yes, thank you.
Council Daniel, the silent one.
The silent one?
Doesn't say much.
No. Nope. Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. I'd like to compliment Rick Nash, Counselor Rick Nash, and his co-presenters, Steve Gregoire and Steve Chaney, for a very informative, descriptive showcase of the water treatment plant up on Breckneck. I think that it's well worth seeing. It's on Southbridge Community Television through YouTube, and it's also on the cable channel as well, the Town Cable Channel, and people wonder where the money is going and if it's being well-spent, and that video definitely showcases what it is that's going on to produce the water, the award-winning water that we have here in town. I use the water for all purposes. It makes great ice for an occasional beverage, and it's, I've been up there as well myself